Good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, February 18, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. If we can all stand for the page of allegiance.
Let's lay allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, every man, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roca?
Rosa Holloway did provide notice that she would be absent this evening, so she has an excused absence for the record. John DeLulo did not provide notice of his absence, so he will be unexcused absence for the record. Maria Carney?
Here.
Dr. Jeff Rivera?
Here.
Brandon Whaley?
Here.
Carmelo Oquendo?
Here.
Tabitha Rubin?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum, and Members Oquendo and Ms. Rubin will be voting members as well this evening.
Thank you. Do we have approval of the minutes for the January 21, 2020 meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Our motion made by Tabitha and a second made by Ms. Carney, all in favor? Aye. Anyone oppose? Do we have Councilman Keith Trace here? There we go.
Hello, Planning Commission. Thank you for having me here tonight. I get the pleasure of presenting you guys with little token of appreciation from the city and from the City Council for all the hard work you guys do on the Planning Commission. I know it takes a lot of time to review all those agenda packets that are this thick, but I really appreciate what you guys do to help move the city forward. So, got a little certificate and a little thing to give out to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for that meeting the other night, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I did hear everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe everyone got the distribution of the 2020 Florida Commission of Ethics pamphlet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are we ready for the first item on the agenda? First item, DRC case number, ordinance number ZMA 19-00003, 2020-07. Type of application, zoning map amendment.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Leonardo Torres, Associate Planner here in the Planning and Zoning Division. The first case is DRC case number ZMA 19-3, ordinance 2020-07. The subject site is 9.48 acres, and it's known as Deer Creek West. It's the expansion of Deer Creek West. The existing zoning is agriculture, and the applicant is proposing a zoning of R1B, single-family dwelling, that is compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. The zoning map amendment request does meet the city's strategic plan goal of growth And DRC and staff reviewed the zoning map amendment request, honored before January 14 of 2020, and recommend approval of ordinance 2020-07. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? State your name and address for the record.
John Porter with Osseo Engineering, 1003 Florida Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida, here on behalf of the applicant, happy to answer questions that you guys may have. This is a roughly 10-acre parcel surrounded by mostly the same zoning around the perimeter. We're looking to change that zoning to R1B and continue the expansion of that subdivision, most likely.
Thank you. At this time, are there any comments from the public?
Well, first off, I don't understand.
Sir, if you're gonna make anyone who wishes to make comments tonight, be sure to fill out a form either before or after you've done so, and then stand at the podium and state your name and address for the commission, please. Thank you.
You can do it after, sir. You can fill out afterwards.
I'll just talk to everyone. You.
Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ted Michael, and my address is 3618 Bristol Cove Lane. And I'm just curious as to if it's, you know, conservation area on the map that we were, you know, bought into when we come into this subdivision, how it's able to be changed, you know, with approval ordinance and everything else. When 114, I don't believe we were, was anybody else, you know, at that meeting, or what, how does this happen? I'm not sure of the process. I'm not a lawyer, I'm just a citizen.
Thank you. The, I guess the applicant can answer to that, of the city?
Yeah, for the public comment, the commission is here to take the feedback from the public. If there's questions that the commission has of the applicant, or the city staff, or of anyone from the community, they're willing, they're able to do that. This is not a commission that's gonna be providing answers to questions. It's a quasi-judicial advisory board that's gonna be recommending approval or denial of these items to the City Council. So, it'll take your feedback certainly, and take it into consideration with regard to each case.
So, what are we actually doing here? By me coming here, I mean, you sent me a letter, and it said that if I had any questions or statements or anything about it, so I'm here and I'm asking questions.
You're here to make a presentation and give your feedback and input to the commission. If you have questions, you can get from staff, you can ask questions of staff, or the applicant, or raise the questions, and they can respond to those, or you can get the information that you're seeking outside of these proceedings. The commission will take your feedback, but they're not here to answer your questions.
All right, well, I mean, like I was saying, we were, when we bought this, I've lived here all my life, and it took me forever to buy a house, as a, you know, finally I got my family into a house, and I was sold that it was conservation area, and we paid an extra $2,000 for what it's called a premium lot. And now whoever this developer is, is, they're trying to put a house in my backyard. I mean, I feed deer by hand, and I fish out of this pond, and they're trying to put houses there. I, I mean, I'm sure this is just a formality, all the donations to whoever's already probably been made and whatever, I mean, I'm probably just wasting my time up here, but I just wanted to come up and see exactly what was going on, because I was sold that this was gonna be a conservation area. I got a pond back there and stuff, I mean, when are they gonna stop? When is it, when are we gonna start celebrating hometown or the small-town living? I don't know. Like I said, I'm probably just a little knucklehead up here speaking some crap, and nobody wants to hear, but I guess that's all I wanted.
Thank you.
Let me have your pinback.
Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Step forward, make sure you sign one of the forms afterward if you haven't done so already, and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Stephen Bate, and I'm also a resident of the area 3626 Bristol Cove Lane, Deer Creek. If I, if I may, I'd like to give you some papers.
You can hand it to Jesse there, and she'll distribute it to us.
Those will become part of the file, so those are copies, I hope.
This is a copy of my remarks.
Okay.
If, you know, people wanna follow along. These are pictures of the area that we're talking about. This is what it looked like from my lot, and sort of be built there.
Sir, you can make, sir, you can make your presentation to the microphone, and no one's gonna be able to hear you from here, sir. You can submit those papers in, and they'll become part of the file.
Okay, and this shows what the previous speaker was talking about. Okay, members. I'm not a familiar speaker in front of councils either, but I have some points I'd like to bring up. They are on the papers that I'm circulating. You can follow along if you wish. Uh, number one, the wooded area in question was referred to as a conservation area by Highland Homes builders, not the same builders who are in Deer Creek West, the ones who built our homes originally. The buyers were told it could not be removed, providing valuable green space for over 50 homes that are bordering or around the area. Only in the past few months have we learned that this was false, that the property was privately owned and recently purchased by Richmond American Homes of Florida. Second, the nearly 10 acres are a habitat for numerous animals, birds, among them deer, osprey, eagles, and owls. Third, Deer Creek has been expanded twice already in the past few years, including the 92 new homes being built by Richmond American Homes, and now totaling over 560 homes in the Deer Creek subdivision. All traffic from these homes must enter and exit the community onto Canoe Creek Road by one entrance and exit. Traffic has become excessively heavy due to the addition of two communities just to the south of Deer Creek, Whaley Creek and Esprit. Thirty-plus new homes in Deer Creek in this area, that 9.4-some acres, will put an additional burden on entry and exit, plus additional traffic inside the community, which is already stressed from the recent additions by Richmond American Homes. And four, there's been no formal communication between Richmond American Homes and Deer Creek HOA, or the Don Asher Management Company, which acts as the general manager for the Deer Creek HOA concerning the building of additional homes beyond the 92 they're already working on in Deer Creek West. And so this matter, I believe, requires more time to bring all parties into the discussion. This was all done rather quickly. The notice we received two to three weeks ago of the public hearing was the first official notice we had. We've heard some rumors and things, but we had no other notice that this was going to take place. And so I'm requesting that any decisions of, on the question of rezoning this property, be put off until all parties can be heard. Some of those would be our legal representation from the HOA, and others who are involved at Deer Creek. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to speak?
Mr. Rubin, you want to get back to it?
Stay on the mic.
I was thinking about speaking or not speaking. I feel out the form afterwards. My name is Jimmy Tracero, and I'm a new resident, and my address is 2511 West End Drive. And one of the reasons that I decided just now to speak is because there is an approval of ordinance that I was not aware of, and who approved this? Do you know who approved this?
So, it hasn't been?
This is an approval of ordinance.
The Planning Commission recommends.
Okay. The Planning Commission, okay. Who does, who is part of the Planning Commission?
Sir, if I could, if you could address your comments to the commission. Again, for everyone here tonight, this case is a, an application for rezoning. This is the Planning Commission which is going to be making its advisory.
It has not been approved?
Sir.
Has not been approved?
So, this is a case that's appearing before the Planning Commission now.
Okay.
This is an advisory commission.
Yes.
They're gonna take and review the application.
Yes.
Public feedback.
Yeah.
Staff direction, applicant information, and then apply the Land Development Code criteria.
Uh-huh.
Make a collective recommendation to the City Council. The matter will then come before the City Council.
I understand.
That's where we are tonight.
No, I understand.
Okay.
No, I understand now. Thank you for addressing me that way. So, now with that said, I will stand with this two gentlemen. This cannot go forward until all parties are represented. I stand in with them and be part with them from the beginning until the end. I believe that when I bought my property, which was in September, I was, it was addressed as well as a premium lot, which I paid $15,000 for it, and it was addressed as a preserve area. So, I cannot tell you anymore that how disappointed I am that I purchased a lot, that I am, that it's going to have a house, where I thought that it was going to have a wonderful view, that I was going to enjoy for the rest of my life with my kids. That's why I moved to St. Cloud. I come from Fort Lauderdale, where we do things differently. Fort Lauderdale and Miami, we do things differently. New York City, where I grew up, we do things differently. Every part of the city is represented, and they are heard in one meeting, and here I don't think that we have been represented accordingly. So, and/or advised accordingly, like the staff recommendation. Okay, they should have a representation of the public in that meeting as well, why? Because we live in there, we pay our taxes in there. You know, I pay my taxes timely. So, I believe that that so, which should be heard as well, not only today, but further going on the steps if this moves forward. So, please put this off until we have a further representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to speak on this behalf? Would the applicant like to add any further comments to what was said?
Yeah, I think it sounds like one of the big concerns is that promises were made in the past about property that perhaps someone didn't have the entitlement to fulfill that promise and protect what the, maybe that what they were there saying. From my understanding, there's not a conservation easement on the property or anything to prohibit the development. And I think anytime that a subdivision or any development comes in, you're, you know, if you go back far enough in time, it's taking up some kind of, some kind of ground cover, some kind of habitat, and that's why, you know, we have planning and a comprehensive plan here at the city, I believe, so that we're developing in the right way and preserving the right areas. And this is a rezoning that's in an area that's part of the future land use, is for residential, so it's consistent with the city's plan for the future for the city. So, things are changing a lot around here, and I sympathize with those who have changes around them and things that are coming, so.
What do you represent?
I'm with Osseo Engineering. I'm working with the.
Sir, the discussions you can have can be off-mic or out in the hallway, but just the comments can come to the commission if you wanna answer questions outside, that's fine. The commission may have some questions for you, or for staff, or for any of the members of the community that they wish to engage with, but.
Thank you for the reminder.
Just, it would be more efficient if we direct our comments to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no further comments from the public, we'll close the public section down and open up to the commission. Are there any questions this commission may have? I actually have one. I'm aware of the community, but what I wanna know is, was those areas ever really deemed as conservation areas, or was it something else just assumed to be a conservation area?
I can answer that question. Leonardo Torres, Associate Planner. The applicant's request for R1B rezoning is compatible with the future land use of the subject site. That ordinance was passed back in 2004, and it's low-density residential.
Okay. I don't think that was his question. I, my question, 'cause I'm along the same lines, I think what I understand you to say, was that property deemed conservation?
I'm not sure.
Because, because I know there've been communities where the, they'll sell you the property and say, this is a conservation area, but it's never written in a deed or anything like that.
Right.
And then, of course, they make the changes to it.
Right, yeah, as far as I'm aware, I went as back, I went back to 2004, and I could find the approved ordinance that it was designated with a low-density residential future land use, but it's never been, since then, it's never been conservation.
Was that when it was annexed into the city?
I believe so, yes.
Because my property is ag and conservation. When I got, when I got annexed into the city, it was designated as low-density residential after my annexation.
Yes.
So, as it stands right now, is that property just agriculture property, or is it ag and conservation, I think is what our question is? We would like to know if, I understand the FLU, but is that what the property was designated?
Currently, it's designated just agriculture. It has city zoning. So, back in 2004, it was annexed, and the future land use was adopted to be low-density residential.
So, then, from what, taking from that, I understand that it is the whole, is the developer who is deeming it conservation, correct?
The developer?
It, that's, that's what, if, if it's not zone conservation, then the developer is the one who is deeming it conservation area and selling it.
As, as the.
As conservation.
Right, yeah, so it's not actually conservation, it's just agriculture zoning.
As of 2004?
As of 2004, yes.
I have a question for applicant. What are the potential number of homes for this particular location?
So, right now with the, it would be whatever would be in the Land Development Code right now, it's looking like 32 homes.
And do you know if the homeowners' association has been addressed regarding these changes?
I don't know if communication, it may or may not have happened. I don't know the relationship with Richmond Homes intimately enough to know, to confirm whether, you know, what correspondence has transpired.
I guess the same question for the city. Do we know if any actual communicate, formal communication took place between the HOA and the developer?
I believe the HOA was notified by public notice, mailing.
But is the HOA under developer control, though, currently? Or has it been turned over to the actual homeowners?
So, from my understanding, there's an existing HOA that's part of the Deer Creek development, and then Richmond Homes would have to come to an agreement, either joining the HOA of that group, or have their own HOA as part of the development.
Another quick question. Where would the entrance to this property be? It's bordered by a pond to the east, looks like a pond to the west, and homes on both north and south, so how are we getting?
So, on the west side, you'll see there's a road that ends, and it'll be coming in straight in from Deer Creek, so that was the Deer Creek expansion that Richmond Homes is, it's currently under construction, so that would, it'd be an expansion of that, that roadway network.
So, is that gonna cut across this way, gotta go all the way to the west side and drive in?
I'm not sure.
Well, looking at the map.
No exactly, but, okay.
If I'm looking at the map, if I come in through either Deer Creek Boulevard or Bristol Cove, I gotta go all the way around to that one little side entrance to that property.
That's correct.
So, they're not gonna be building another road from the east side to connect, let's say Deer Creek.
There, there'll be two entrances to the subdivision, one to Bristol Cove Lane on the south side, and then one at the northeast corner of the subdivision.
Okay.
But this is for, again, this is for rezoning. All of this would be reviewed under SDP as a part of, part of city planning staff and engineering staff looking at that in, in relation to that, so this is just for rezoning.
Is Richmond Homes involved in the current development of the other parts of the community, or is it just this lot that was purchased?
They are currently actively under construction for the adjacent property.
For the other parts?
Yep.
Any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, I do, I do have a question, but I don't, I don't know that, maybe the city can answer it, but in relation to the, to the folks that have paid for premium lot, now, I don't know what that entails, I haven't seen the legal documents, but mentioned several times, we purchased a premium lot, paid extra for that based on the view. So, they're, they're paying, I would assume, more in taxes based on that, because the value of the lot is more. And one of the 16 findings, number 11, is required to property values. Now, the proposed change will adversely affect property values in the adjacent area. So, the statement from the developer is that the proposed change is not anticipated to adversely affect property values in the adjacent area. Future development will comply with code and regulatory requirements, providing all necessary steps to maintain and improve property values within the district and adjacent areas. But I am, I guess, perplexed if I paid more for a lot based on its view, and now that view is going away, will that not adversely impact their property values?
Yeah, and I think that's where some of the concern overall is, is it sounds like there was a promise, just from understanding this meeting, it sounds like there was a promise that was made to a lot of individuals, that they didn't have the entitlements or ownership of the land to really come through on that promise. I don't know the history of any of that, what was said, who the, I don't even know who the original developer was of that, it isn't a parcel, I know it's not Richmond Homes. So, that's kind of an unfortunate situation, and I don't know all the details of that to, to give, you know, any advice regarding that.
So, I didn't, there was mention that the property was recently purchased by Richmond Homes. Can you confirm, is that the case, it was owned by someone else until recently?
Yes, and I don't know the exact closing date, if it was in recent past or upcoming here in the future. I don't think that the owner of the parcel prior to Richmond Homes, if the clothes did come, is the same as the developer of the homeowners here that have the complaints.
I'm sorry you're having to answer these questions.
It's okay, happy to answer.
But I appreciate your patience in trying to answer the questions. I mean, it is, it's, it's difficult to agree with number 11, that it won't have an adverse impact. I mean, I'm looking at the map they were given when they purchased, and I'm not sure when this is dated, but it clearly says conservation area, and understand routinely conservation area can be converted, and then another parcel set off somewhere else for that conservation or, and such, but, you know, number, number 11 gives me pause. Number 14 as well, there are substantial reasons why reasonable use of the property cannot be accomplished under existing zoning, and it goes in to explain, of course, we can't have agricultural there because of where it's at. I doubt they'd want corn in the backyard either, but, you know, just looking at the properties surrounding, what's been there for so long, I don't know that I agree that it's a reasonable use of the property based on number 11 and moving into 14. So, that would be just a comment, I guess, and sharing my thoughts with the commission.
Any other comments?
No, I agree.
I would even go so far as to say that, that it affects number 15 also, because there's, there's not adequate, it doesn't appear that there's adequate access.
And I would, I, staff does their job, and they do it well.
Right.
So, I don't wanna call, I'm not an engineer, so I don't wanna call their judgments in the question, but understanding that there will have to be an agreement with the existing But understanding that there will have to be an agreement with the existing HOA is the only entrance, and to get to this property goes through their property. Is that a public-maintained road coming in off of Canoe Creek?
Yes, that's, I believe, the City of St. Cloud roadway.
All the way in to the turnabout, or?
I believe so.
And then, does it extend further than that, or does that the community?
It doesn't, well, that property's under construction with Richmond Homes now, which those streets will be a part of the plat that will be dedicated to the City of St. Cloud.
Not being gated, that will remain a publicly maintained road?
That's correct.
And all the infrastructure that goes with it, sewer, sewer systems?
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
Thoughts, comments? Do we have anything to know where, whether that communication between Richmond and the HOA took place, and what their opinion is, or what their comments might have been? Recommendations they might have made?
I can't speak to that. The staff simply looked at the, the request for rezoning with the 16 required findings, and we're recommending approval based off of that.
So, with that, understanding, again, you guys do a fantastic job. But number 11 regarding property values, the word is, it's not anticipated. Well, as a homeowner, that's a very broad term. So, is city comfortable that it's, again, they've paid additional? That's not going to affect their property values to tear all that down and put up some more houses?
Again, I, I can't speak to that. I can only, you know, look at what was submitted by the applicant and reviewed it under the current.
That's understood.
Regulations.
I appreciate that honest answer.
Was Highland Homes invited to this meeting also?
I'm sorry?
Was Highland Homes invited to this meeting also?
Believe they're out of business.
Yeah, I believe the applicant and agent were, were advised to attend the meeting, so. That would be Richmond Homes and Officer Lengneri.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask, Mr. Torres, do you know when this is going to come before the city?
I believe it's going to go to city council pending any recommendation from Planning Commission in March. I believe the first city council meeting in March.
The first meeting in March? Do we know what day that is?
I can. Should be, oh, it's the 12th, March 12th.
So, this, this item, whatever the commission recommends, will appear on the agenda for the commission, or, excuse me, for the city council, on Thursday, March 12th?
March 12th.
Okay. Just want to make sure that the.
Those are the anticipations.
Community is alerted to that.
Yes.
So, March 12th, it'll come before the city council.
There will also be a second public hearing as well, on the April 9th.
On April 9th, okay. Thank you. Any further comments from the commission? Sure.
Just with the conservation easement, when this is looked at, going into design, environmental report will be conducted if it hasn't already, and identify any conservation easement that the Water Management District has. From what I've seen in recent history with removal of conservation easements, the, it's very extensive, has to go to the board of the Water Management District down in West Palm, just even here, to remove a conservation easement. It's very, very difficult to do. And that due diligence that will be done under design would uncover a conservation easement. If it existed, it wouldn't be able to be intruded upon without release of that conservation easement by the board from the Water Management District. So, that's something to, that you can, you can understand and lean on with that, that will be looked at at that time.
Thank you. No further comments, do we have? Well, at this point, the public has been closed. If you have any other further comments you can get with the city afterwards, am I correct with that?
You can, you can always open up public comment if the commission wishes to. At some point, you'll have to close down the feedback and deliberate and make a decision. But you can reopen and take further feedback if you wish. It's encouraged to, that everyone that wishes to make their comments, make their comments initially, and so that from a time efficiency standpoint for the commission, cases can move forward.
Guys like to hear some more, or? You state your name, and you're, we'll open up to the public one more time.
Tim Michael, 3618 Bristol Cove. First off, I'd like to apologize to all you guys for my ignorance of the way these proceedings take place and stuff. And I just, I had a, on my contract, when I bought the house, it's got the, where I paid extra for it, and I don't know if that would help if I give it to you. It's not a copy. You guys can have it.
Anything that you submit to the commission becomes part of the file, yeah, you'll relinquish control of it.
Yeah, you can have it. If it'd help.
It's up to you.
And also, also, I have, I have pictures of Florida panther in my backyard that you don't see very often. I've got pictures of eagles fishing in the pond, bobcats, deer. I mean, it'd be a shame to lose that, but I guess my frustrations weren't directed towards you guys, it should have been directed towards these guys.
Understandable.
Thank you.
Jimmy Tercero, 2511 West End Drive. And like I said, I'm new to the city, right? But I'm new, I'm not new to Florida. Been living here 20-something years, and I've been paying all my taxes, you know, on a normal basis. One of the things that I'm more concerned is, what is the position of the city? I'm addressing, you know, the commission, but one of the things that I'm, as I'm addressing to you, I'm, I'm asking to myself, what should be the position of the city? It should be helping the developer or helping the, the citizens that live in the city? It should be helping the environment that is in, within that zone, or helping the, the developer? Is it helping the eagles that are flying in there? Is the, you know, the wildlife that we see and that we enjoy, that we pay for, to see every morning, when, wake up in the morning? Or is it, you know, helping, having some other homes, you know? What is the, I see an urge for the representative of the city today of passing on, on that this is not a preserve area. You know, like, I'm making a point, that this is not a preserve area. And regardless of what it is, we need to have a respect for nature, and we need to have a respect for what, which our childrens are seeing as well. You know, tonight, my children are going to ask me, my son Alec, who is 10 years old, and my daughter Isabel, who is 12, and one day, she is hoping to be an attorney just like you, Mr. Jack. Mr. Jack?
Yes, sir. I hear you.
Can you please look at me?
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you, sir. She wants to be just like you, an attorney. And hopefully, one day, I can tell her, Mr. Jack Morgerson cares so much about the city, about the area that we live in, that he stood up for what we love and what we pay for. That he stood up, that he did not stood up on the side or in favor of our developer, that he stood up for the city and for the citizens of this city. So, I'm asking you, all of you, please, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Carney, and thank you, Mr. Wally, for bringing that point, because we don't have those points so that we can read them. Those points should be available to all of us as well, the citizens, for us to see, because we can come with those conclusions as well. Look, I'm a professional, I'm in healthcare. I don't understand much of what is said in here, but guess what? I can go to a friend if those, that information is sent to us, so that we can get a little bit more educated about the situation, and we can make a sound decision, and we can sound honestly profitable and understandable in regards to what we're doing, what we're saying here. Mr. Morgerson, I'm addressing the commission. So, I, I hope you can pay attention to my remarks.
Sir, if I, if I could.
So, I thank you, Mr. Morgerson, for your attention. You know, I believe that you, you should give me the respect that you expect me to give you, sir. So, when I talking to my daughter, one day, I'm going to tell her, Mr. Morgerson, you've been a great advocate for the city. You're a great advocate for the, for the, for the, the nature of the city, and I believe that this is a point that we need to make today. We don't want to destroy the, the nature that we pay for, to save and to enjoy, and to have my children enjoy it every day in the morning. That's what I pay for. Otherwise, I would have gone to another place in another city, and I'd be enjoying the same kind of nature that I pay for, and at this time, I'm not going to enjoy it if, hopefully, you guys listen to me. So, I thank you. Please, listen to us. We paying for the salaries, we paying for everything that is happening in the city, and I, we, with our taxes. So, please, understand that what we're trying to do here. Please, listen to us, okay? It's important. And if we are not educated enough to pass this message through, and how passionate we are about this, please, educate us. Let us know in advance so that we can get, you know, I don't know, someone, an architect or anyone that knows about the situation, so that they can give us right of eyes in that regard. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to address some of the comments directed at me personally. My name's Jack Morgerson, the city attorney representing the commission here this evening. I'm not here representing the city, the applicant, or any members of the community. I'm here representing the commission. And I'm here to ensure that they follow the proper protocols, procedures, and follow the Land Development Code, take the feedback that's presented here from all parties, and deliberate, deliberate, and make a finding that's consistent with the Land Development Code and the procedures that are adopted by the city code. That's my role. When you were asking for my attention, I was trying to get the sheet of paper that hopefully you've prepared, that I can address you by your last name, because I could not understand it when you approached the microphone. That was the reason for my distraction. Wanted to be clear about that.
My last name is Jimmy Tercero, T, like Tom, E.R., C.E.R.O.
Thank you, Mr. Tercero, appreciate that.
You're very welcome, sir.
And I just want to also add that, you know, when we're up here on the board, we don't favor the city or the community. We're neutral in what we do, and we basically base our decisions on 16 findings, regulations, however you want to call it. And if those are satisfied, then our decisions are made based on those decisions. We listen to both sides, and then we talk amongst ourselves up here to clarify any other issues that we may have, and then we make our decisions on that. So, I don't want you to think that we're, we're here to favoritize one side over the other. We do stay neutral.
And also, please be advised that we don't get paid for our jobs. We're all volunteer up here. We have to present our papers, and then we get voted on by the city. So, this is our free time, so we can have a better city. I've lived here 44 years. I came from Miami Beach.
I have a question for the applicant. I have some concerns with the protected wildlife that has been mentioned, and the, the effect that another development will have on the animals in that area, and how will that be addressed?
Sure. An environmental report will be conducted if it hasn't already on the property, and will identify sensitive species in the area, and will address them accordingly with the rules of the state to protect those species, should they have habitat on the property, including eagles and?
So, what happens? For instance, what happens if we recommend approval, it goes to city council for approval, but there, there is protected species found? What happens in those types of instances? Because I genuinely do not know what happens in that type of instance.
Sure. I'm, I'm not an environmental consultant, I am a civil engineer by trade, but just in development scenarios, we run across things like that on occasion. So, there's different regulations by the state for different species on what would have to happen. So, if this were to, say, move forward, and a, there was a resident bald eagle in an area, there's like a development radius, I know, for, for that particular species. And if it's something else, there's different, I mean, each animal's different that the state has regulations for, and those would have to be abided by at the development stage, and that would be reviewed. It doesn't just get reviewed by the City of St. Cloud when it goes to the development, it gets reviewed by the Water Management District, through the state, for compliance with all those regulations with wildlife, stormwater, everything else.
Okay, so then, my next question comes, should it get approved by us tonight and go before city council in three weeks? Is that sufficient time for those environmental studies to be done?
So, this would be for just the rezoning? So, regardless if it was rezoned, these things would be evaluated during the site development plan process with ample enough time to, you know, to do those investigations. And in fact, these permits can't be completed with the state until the habitat and wildlife issues are, are addressed.
No, no pass.
We'll close the public once again. Any final thoughts from the commission before we move to a motion?
So, I'll just, I mean, I'll reiterate that we have 16 findings to look at. And if all 16 don't align, we have a responsibility to look at those. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but not anticipated leaves a lot of room for the possibility. Now, it's up to city council what they do with this. But number 11 is not in line with the 16 findings, in my opinion.
Thank you. Should we have a motion?
So, if we're, normally, I make motions to approve, and I'm pretty good at those. How do we go about if, if we're making a motion not to approve? Well. Same way? The same, you would make a motion for either recommending approval or denial of the application that's submitted, and then you would ideally, in, in the instance of an approval, you list that all the criteria have been met. In a denial, you would cite the particular criteria that was not achieved to your satisfaction, and that would be the motion that would be carved. And just, so, I'm clear, if I chose to recommend to deny it based on number 11, that information will go to city council, that that's the reason I made the motion that I made? Should be, it'll be part of the record. It should be. I'm sure, I'm sure that, I'm sure staff will have that information clearly in their materials, and the applicant as well. And the community that wishes to appear and participate. So, yeah, should be part of the record. Well, in that case, it's quiet, so I'll make a motion to deny the ordinance 2020-07 based on the opinion that number 11 is not sufficiently answered in the 16 findings.
I'll second that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to deny made by Mr. Whaley, and a second by Mr. Aquendo. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Well, aye. I'll, I'll agree.
Are you in favor of the motion?
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of his motion, yes.
That was seconded. So, that's? So, it passes 5-0. So, the recommendation is for denial of the application that's submitted, 5-0 in support of the recommendation? Based on number 11. Based on the number 11, I understand. Okay. Thank you. Next agenda, DRC case number, ordinance number ANX19-00013, 2020-04. Type of application, voluntary annexation.
The next three agenda items are all related. They are annexation, future land use, and zoning. This first one before you, voluntary annexation, DRC case ANX19-13, ordinance number 2020-04. The subject site is 36.27 acres. Background about the site, excuse me. The voluntary annexation is compliant with Section 171.044 Florida statutes, in that it is contiguous and reasonably compact, and we do have a signed petition from all the property owners. The subject site is adjacent to city limits on the northern and eastern property boundaries. The existing future land use is LDR, low-density residential in the county. The existing zoning is AC, agriculture and conservation in the county. Staff review the requests, and the voluntary annexation is compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. The voluntary annexation is in line with the city's strategic plan goal of growth management. DRC and staff reviewed the voluntary annexation request on or before January 7 of 2020, and recommend approval of ordinance 2020-04. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Kathy Haddaway with Polis and Bennett, 2602 East Livingston Street, Orlando. I'm representing the, these three applications, the annexation, next you'll consider the conference of plan amendment, and then the third is the rezoning. As was stated by staff, this application meets all of the state and city requirements for an annexation, and we would ask for your support. I'm not going to stand up and make this spiel for all three applications because I know the hour is getting late, but I will be here and available for any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Please step forward, state your name, and as for the record, and if you haven't filled out one of the forms, make sure you do so afterward.
Thank you. My name's Eric Sewell, 5099 Rockabye Road, St. Cloud, within probably 500 feet of the property that's being proposed annex. Seven years ago, we purchased the property we currently live in, had multiple acres. We bought it because of the acreage, because of the zoning that was in there. We, two years ago, tried to bifurcate part of our property, just try self, two acres, and we were chastised by the county, saying that the master plan did not allow for us to even go with a two-acre property. We had to at least have 2.5 acres minimum. And we were really brought over the coals, I guess, and said that for an individual to try to change or to have any impact on the master plan wasn't reasonable, and the master plan was put together because of a longstanding practice that this is the government of the county, and a single developer, a single individual should not be having the authority to do that. What we've seen over the last few years now, two years, is Twin Lakes has been annexed by the, the city. Hanover Lakes has now been annexed by the city. So when the group talks about this annexing is, is adjacent to existing property, that would not have been true two years ago. It had been an isolated area, totally distinctly out of the, the city zone. So just because of the recent zoning activity that's happened, the annexing, our property was soon to be an enclave because of this, and we would automatically could be annexed without any, my understanding, without any fight that we could do. Essentially, the city could go ahead and annex it because our property now is surrounded by these existing continual annexes that's happening. You know, the property is, was a soil pit. The owner of that property benefited from the zoning. We lived with dump trucks going into that property for several years. We had made no comment about it because that was a zoning that was acquired, and we understood that when we purchased the property. Now, after the soil pit, soil pit has been depleted, and they no longer can use as good as this existing zoning, now they want to change it, again, for their own benefit, not for the other owners in the area. So I think this is a continual thing that we're seeing, is that the property is continuing to get annexing. Us will be enclaves soon, and certainly will be part of the city that we never planned to be part of. And we purchased the property because of it being agricultural. Another point of my understanding is that they're saying they only want to put nine homes into this area, but they're asking for R1 zoning. There's two other zoning regulations below R1 that potentially could be used, but for some reason, they're not doing it, which makes me then wonder, are they really going to do it just for the nine homes? Are they going to turn around at some point after zoning's been changed and go back to the five or six homes per acre that they're allowed? So I don't understand the reason for the R1 zoning when it doesn't match their, their plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to address that?
Thank you for the opportunity, Kathy Haddaway, again, for the record. The gentleman is right. Property has annexed into the city north of this property. The Twin Lakes and Hanover Lakes projects have annexed into the city. This is the next adjacent property to that. One thing I do want to point out is that this is also consistent with the joint planning agreement between the county and the city. This is in the area where, because this property is in the city's utility service area, it we, they will have to get water and sewer services from the city, and as part of that, it is encouraged to annex into the city. In fact, an annexation agreement would have to be executed to get those utility services, even if we did not, or the applicant did not voluntarily request to annex. So just wanted to add a little bit more, more background to this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a minute of commentary?
Go ahead. State your name and address for the record again.
Eric Sewell, 5099 Rockabye Road. Obviously, this whole area was zoned for agriculture first. We were to purchase a house, put a well in, put septic tank in on the seven acres that we have, we have purchased. They likewise had that same opportunity. They chose instead to dig this pit and take away some of that opportunity form. They made the choice, not anybody else. So they could have used the home, the property as acreage, and put septic tank in, and put wells in, and used it like the rest of the, the residentials in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to speak? We'll close down to the public at this time and open it up to the commission.
I'm, I'm confused. I know this, I know this property, and from the photographs, from the aerial photographs, it looks like the soil pit is full of water. Is that correct?
Yes.
Applicant? I'm guessing. I don't know who to ask that question of.
I believe there is water in, in, in that pond, yes. That is correct. So the homes would be built around on the perimeter of the property that is not part of the pond today.
Okay. So the intent is to leave the pond as it is?
That is the intent, yes.
Any other questions, comments?
How many properties are going to be built on that?
We've, the, the applicant has just done some early planning right now, and they thought that based on the other properties in that area and serving as a transition between the more dense property to the north, and based on the available land that's, that's not included in the, the water area today, that they can probably get around nine units on that site. And just to point out, well, we'll get to the next application in a second, but don't want to get ahead of things. Thank you. Any other questions?
That, staff, when, when was the JPA originally approved? Was that '04 or before?
I believe the JPA was approved in 2014.
Well, it was renewed in 2014. Am I remembering that correctly? Said it was earlier than that, that it was actually initially drawn up between the county and St. Cloud? I know it was renewed in 2014. There were some changes.
As far as I'm aware, it's 2014. I'm not sure though, if there was an agreement before.
Just trying to remember.
Jack, I think you have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Whaley.
Although, I was just, do you remember when the JPA was originally?
Specifically, I don't, in terms of the year? No, I don't. It'd be a guess if I, it's been more than a few years, it'd be my closest guess, but...
I mean, regarding annexation, I don't have any questions.
Then, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve annexation based on the 16 findings, which are consistent with the JPA.
I have a motion made by Mr. Whaley. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second made by Mr. Aquendo. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Annexation passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda, DRC case number, ordinance number CPA 19-00011, 2020-05. Type of application, future land use map amendment, large scale.
Leonardo Torres, Associate Planner with the city. Excuse me. The, this comprehensive plan amendment is DRC case CPA 19-11, ordinance 2020-05. This is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment. A little background, the existing future land use is low-density residential in the county. The applicant is proposing a future land use of low-density residential in the city. The allowed density with the proposed comprehensive plan amendment is up to four dwelling units per gross acre. Staff review the requests. It is compatible with the surrounding area. No adverse impacts to city facilities were determined. The comprehensive plan amendment is in line with the city's strategic plan goal of growth management, and DRC and staff reviewed the request on or before January 7 of 2020 and recommend approval of ordinance 2020-05.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, Kathy Haddaway with Polis and Bennett, 2602 East Livingston Street, Orlando. The only point that I would like to make with regard to the request for the conference of plan amendment or future land use map amendment is that we are currently in this, the county today, the future land use is low-density residential, which allows a density of a minimum of three units per acre and a maximum of eight units per acre. Your future land use designation of low-density residential provides for a maximum density of four units per acre. So in, in essence, you can, coming into the city and requesting the city's low-density residential, the developer is actually reducing the maximum number of units that could potentially be built on the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Open up to the public. Any public comments? We'll close it out to the public. Open up to the commission at this point.
Do you know how much dry land is on that lot currently?
No, I, I do not. I, I don't have that number in my head. I apologize.
That's all right. I was going to quote Water World, but, you know, that's a long time ago.
No comments?
So then, let's move to a motion. If I could, just, the commission members, the, the recommendation from the report is for a recommendation of approval and to transmit the recommendation to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, so, in the event that that's the inclination of the commission.
Do I have a motion?
All right. So I will make a recommendation for approval. Lost my place. Ordinance 2020-05, the future land use map amendment, based on the 16 findings, recommend approval as well as transmission to the economic government. Yeah, what he said. Sorry.
Florida Department of Economic, Department of...
Interagency review.
Yes.
An interagency review.
I have a motion made by Mr. Whaley. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second made by Ms. Carney. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes by 5-0. And the last item on the agenda, DRC case number, ordinance number ZMA 19-00002, ordinance 2020-06. Type of application, zoning map amendment.
Leonardo Torres, Associate Planner. This is ZMA 19-2, ordinance 2020-06, same subject site as the two previous items of, for a total of 36.27 acres, and the request is for approval of the zoning map amendment. Background on the zoning, the existing zoning is AC agriculture and conservation in the county. The proposed zoning is R1, single-family dwelling in the city. It is compatible with surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. The zoning map amendment is in line with the city's strategic plan goal of growth management. DRC and staff reviewed the request for the zoning map amendment on or before January 7 of 2020 and recommend approval of ordinance 2020-06.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Kathy Haddaway, 2602 East Livingston Street, Orlando. Just a statement and confirmation that this requested zoning district is consistent with the future land use of low-density residential and consistent with the plans that we've discussed for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll open it up to the public. Sure thing. State your name and address for the record again.
Yes, my name's Eric Sewell, 5099 Rockabye Road. What I don't understand is how this is compatible with existing zoning. If you go back two years ago, this whole area was agricultural. Obviously, within the past two years, Hanover Lakes has been created. The other large retirement community's been stated. So two years ago, this was not compatible at all. As that progresses, it's a matter of what point, has nothing ever become not compatible? Because if you start the domino effect, where does it stop? I mean, I think that's what we're continuing to see, is that we purchase property, we purchase property in agricultural areas. When we purchased it, there was nothing but orange groves there, dead orange groves, unfortunately for many of them, but it was still all zone agricultural. That's why we went out to that area, so we could have horses, so we could have other things that we wanted. Now, it's that continual domino, so when they say it's compatible with existing or adjacent areas, it's because that adjacent area has recently been changed. If we go back three or four years ago, that was not the case. So I, I got a question, is, is when does a domino effect end? Thank you.
Thank you. Would you say you'd like to make a comment to that, or?
Staff does review the request in the current time, or the current uses that are occurring in the area. So to the north, east, and west, it is single-family residential, which is compatible with the applicant's request.
And at the same time, this is currently county, correct?
Right.
And the county's designation is what currently?
For their zoning is, it's agriculture and conservation, and their future land use is low-density residential.
So it was anticipated at some point this would become residential property in the county?
It, potentially, it could, right?
Any other questions, thoughts? We will close it down to the public at this point, and any final thoughts from the commission?
So currently, as it stands, I'll ask you, 36 acres, maximum of four units per acre. That'd be 144 if you developed the entire property. But currently, the owner is only looking at nine units on this property.
Again, Kathy Haddaway, for the record, yes, that is the amount that they anticipate to get, be able to get on the property. A couple things to keep in mind. One, with the, when the county went through and up, redid their future land use, excuse me, their comprehensive plan, I think it was back in 2007. It's been a long time, and they designated all of this land and the future land use of low-density residential at three to eight units per acre. The intent was that this, that area would infill and develop to that density, but particularly by setting a minimum density. Keep in mind, with the R1 zoning, we have to meet the lot requirements. So, for example, I don't, and staff's here, they can correct me if I'm wrong on this, they would not allow anything that would achieve a density, R1 zoning would not allow anything that would achieve a density of four units per acre on the site. It's going to be much, much less than that in order to meet the, the large lot development standards for the R1 zoning. That will limit the amount of development that can be placed on, on the property.
Just to be clear, before any houses are built, there's still additional approvals and plans that have to be submitted and such, correct?
That is correct. The next step after zoning, if this were to pass the city commission, the next step would be a preliminary subdivision plan to subdivide the lots, and that would actually establish the number of, the final number of lots on the property, and that, I believe, comes before this board as well.
And I was looking for it in the document. I couldn't find it, but it was mentioned that this was, maybe it was staff that said, as a transition from the sizes north to the larger lots to the south. Is that in... larger lots to the south. Is that in, in the comments, or was, is that just the general idea?
That's, that's a fact. And I would, if I could just bring your attention back to the, the staff report, the cover sheet of the staff report for the annexation application?
Is that where it was?
It shows, it shows the size of the lots that are immediately north of this project. The other two staff reports have an aerial on the cover, but this one has, actually shows the lots. So that gives you an idea of the size of lots, of the lots that are immediately to the north, and these would be considerably bigger, which would transition to those areas farther south that have even larger lots.
Any further questions, comments, thoughts? And do I have a motion?
I will make a, let's see, yes. I'll make a motion to approve DRC case ZMA 19-00002, ordinance 2020-06, based on the 16 findings.
I have a motion made by Mr. Whaley. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second made by Mr. Aquendo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Passes 5-0. I believe that's all we have on the agenda.
And just a couple of things to note in the information section. Our next planning commission meeting, March 17 at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. And also, I wanted to note that at the last city council meeting on February 13, there were applications submitted for reconsideration for reappointment for another two-year term to the planning commission, and the following commission members have been reappointed until February of 2022. Rosa Holloway, John Delulo, Maria Carney, and Carmelo Aquendo.
Congratulations. Congratulations, and that's it?
Wake up.